We'll say the pledge and then a short prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you're bowing to me, Heavenly Father, we thankful that we're here tonight. Thank you for the beautiful weather today. I think for all in attendance. I thank you that council members are here. Just lift up those who have heavy hearts and have lost loved ones in our community and others' community in our state and just lift up our legislators at this time that are making decisions at the State House on life issues as well. Just give us all guidance and wisdom in that. We just pray for protection on our first responders, our police and firemen and EMS responders. Just pray for their safety and on our community. And I would come to know you as they live their lives. And we just ask of all of us in Jesus's name. Amen. Okay. Welcome to the Wells County Council session for August 2nd, 2022. We have all seven members of our council presence. We have a quorum. First order of business is the minutes from our July 5th meeting. Has every council member had a chance to review that? And if so, I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved?
A motion?
All second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
And we also had an executive session that evening, which you should have had a chance to have minutes for that. If there's no questions, I'll entertain a motion for the executive session minutes as well.
Motion to approve.
The motion approved?
Second.
In a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So moving on to transfers. We have a few transfers. Anybody have any questions on transfers? Go over anything specific? Have you had one had a chance to look at those? Any particular questions?
Can we approve those, Steve, with one vote?
We can.
I would like to make that motion then.
We have a motion to approve all transfers.
All second.
In a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And now we also have a few additionals. Nate is not here. His additional were for some bridge work, I believe. Which has already been, I think, taken care of.
Is the Casa Grant?
Five ninety-six.
Is that for? What? Do you have any idea, Lisa? I mean, is it a party? Is it a plaque? Is it?
Oh, plat?
No, the-
Casa Grant.
Wells County Casa Grant.
Volunteer recognition. Six hundred dollars. Curious. It's not that much.
Additional appropriations. Volunteer recognition.
Letter Chuck, it just says a five ninety-six, yeah, but it does just recognize recognition, but didn't say what it was for. Yeah, partier.
Specifics behind that. Recognize their volunteers. We can, we can hold that, Chuck, if you would like.
No, it's not that important. I was just, it was just a question.
Okay.
I do remember reading it now. It's more than just one person, I do believe.
Sounds like it, yeah. If there are no other questions, I'll entertain a motion for all additionals then as well.
I'll make that motion to approve all the additional appropriations that's listed.
A motion? We have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Your sheriff is out today, but I have his numbers. For the general numbers today, there's thirty-three pre-trial Superior, twenty-four pre-trial Circuit, fifteen F six, twelve county that are sentenced, and four DOC. Then you should have his activity report in front of you. Like, I cannot answer his questions, but if you have any, we have to direct them back to the Sheriff's Department. Anything specific anyone who needs to ask that could get that to me and I'll ask him or they could ask him directly. If not, we are up for the twenty twenty-three budget requests and first up would be Carolyn. Lou?
Good morning.
Be in your recorder.
I get to kick everything off this year.
You kick it off this year.
All right.
Congratulations.
Okay, so, requested a five percent raise but have kept all of the other expenses requested at the same rates as this year. With no increases in office supplies, postage, travel, lodging, and conference fees, training and seminars, dues and subscriptions. Have also eliminated the request for two thousand dollars for part-time employee to come out of the general fund. But I have a possible solution to the request when we came before council, myself and other elected officials. I believe it was in March. It was earlier this year. And the request was to be able to do more with less. So my proposal for this is to increase salaries for myself and for the deputy by using perpetuation fund monies. And now that can be done. Statute that allows for that. But what I'm asking for is a total compensation of fifty-five dollars for a recorder and forty-one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars total for the deputy. But what that is, is it, that would only be used in addition to whatever is approved for this year's salary. I'm sorry, for two thousand twenty-three salary. So if we get the five percent, if that's approved, then the additional amount would be on top of that, coming out of the perpetuation fund. But in using those funds, the State Board of Accounts requires us to be accountable for what those are being used for. And so there would have to be additional documentation and additional hours within our workday used just for the perpetuation of records. That includes, for us, it would be indexing documents. We have two great big projects that we are waiting to come back in our office as far as records go. When those come back, when those images come back, we're going to have to match those with manually indexing. So that's a project that's going to take years. Also, the, the request for the funds to be used out of perpetuation is on a year-by-year basis. So it's not something that would continue automatically year after year. It'd have to be something that would be evaluated yearly and requested. Also, for perpetuation funds, it's only something that the recorder can use. It can't be demanded that we use it. It's a request. There's an ordinance that would have to be approved in order to use those funds as well as a sworn statement saying that there's enough money in the funds to cover the expenses in order to perpetuate documents.
Can you repeat what those, the request does again? The monies, the dollar amounts?
So a five percent increase would take us up to my salary to forty-six thousand, six hundred and five dollars.
Right.
An increase to use all the perpetuation fund would be eight thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollars to take it up to the fifty-five thousand a year. For deputy, a five percent increase would take her salary up to thirty-six thousand, seventy dollars. An increase, our perpetuation would be five thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars to bring her up to four thousand, I'm sorry, forty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay.
And your clerical assistant, you just moved from the two thousand you took out and you moved that over to the perpetuation fund and added eighteen thousand. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So your clerk will be eighteen instead of two.
Right. Well, now the two we have never.
This year you didn't. It was.
It was prior years. Right, right. Yeah, so we're just, we're just giving that back. We're not requesting that for next year. But we would like to hire someone and pay them out of the perpetuation fund of eighteen thousand dollars, up to eighteen thousand dollars.
So does that perpetuation fund regenerate itself enough?
It does. It does.
For the following year to have those or to make the difference up? Because it wouldn't be in the general fund any longer, right? You'd have to dip out of the perpetuation fund each time.
Right.
To keep that up to the dollar amounts you're talking about.
Yes. Every document that's recorded, a certain amount of money goes into that fund. Also, any copies go into that fund? That, any copies that are purchased.
So a track record of that, it's kept itself each year to be able to, okay.
Each day, yes. Yes.
But the concern on that could be that once this project is done, State Board of Accounts says you can't use that money anymore. Then each year we approve it. So in theory, if it's not in the general budget, we would take it away? Do you see what I'm saying? Because you're saying jump you up to fifty-five thousand by taking out the perpetuation fund?
Yeah.
And if this project is done, no longer can you use salaries out of that? The state boards could see you can't do it anymore. Then it goes away. Either you take a major cut or whoever's in office at the time does, or we have to come up in the general fund with the money to then pay for it. Could put us in a bad spot, potentially.
Right. Well, and it's done year by year. It's, we can only ask to allocate the money each year. We sent out documents, oh gosh, I would say probably between a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars, or two hundred thousand documents. Each one of those is going to have to be manually indexed, identified in our system. So, I mean,
If this project is done, you don't see it being a problem after that to still take salaries out of it when this project's done down the road?
That would be up to whoever's the recorder at the time. How they want to be, but it's going to take a long time.
Did we use that? I always thought that fund was being used to take pictures and get it from the old books and everything else and keep moving them up?
Yes.
Is that what that fund was always used for?
Yes, it is. And that's, that is what we're using it for.
You're wanting to quit that then?
No. Oh, no, not at all. No. That's continuing. It's just basically moving some of that money instead of hiring a company to index it for us. It's just keeping that money in-house and using it for that instead of outsourcing that.
You think you'd have to use overtime in your time or?
No. No overtime. No.
You'll have ample time to at least peck it, peck away at it?
Yes. Nothing is really going to change in our office except we're going to have to document how much time we spend doing the back indexing.
Okay.
How much, how much was spent? I don't, have you had the information? You contracted out last year to have this done? Do you know, just a ballpark idea of what it cost?
A couple of years ago, it was, oh, gosh.
I'm not, just an idea.
Yeah, I think it was maybe sixty thousand for that project.
Okay, so that's money, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Well, and also, now we've got a good amount saved up in the fund now. But we have, we've only received one invoice for the two projects. But-
So waiting on invoices for projects?
Yes.
To dip out of that again?
Yes, but we will have plenty of money in order to cover this request.
Carolyn, you mentioned on the cover letter, the attached salary request is thirty-four thousand. Where does the thirty-four thousand come from?
I'm sorry, I didn't, I meant to change that. When Lisa and I were working the numbers, I, we kind of corrected that. It should be thirty-five thousand, five hundred and ten, which matches budget estimate form for the recorder's perpetuation fund.
It's on page fifty-one.
The total on the perpetuation.
If you go back to page fifty-one.
It's right here.
It's a total. That's, and that shows the breakdown of the individual salaries, the clerical assistance.
Add that into the, okay.
We'd also be paying our share of the social security and retirement.
Amounts in this perpetua, perpetuation fund. You know, like say, for example, the elected official, eight thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollars. So are you expecting to have additional hours than your regular hours or this is going to be, no?
No. All overtime.
Well, pardon me for being naive, but where is the money generated for the perpetuation fund?
For each document that's recorded, a certain amount of money goes into that fund. And also copies that are sold in the office. The, the State of Indiana requires us to charge a dollar per page for copies of recorded documents.
Well, in a nutshell, you generate that in the office.
All of it is generated within the office from the work that we do in the office.
And where's that money? Now, before we do any of this, where's that go? I mean, it gets in that fund and then we use it for what?
It is used only by the recorder. It is not appropriated. It is used for the expenses of perpetuation. Copying them, indexing them.
It stays in that office.
Where? Yeah, right. Yeah, our office. Yeah, it's, it's pretty, pretty self-contained. I mean, our expenses are low, you know.
And if I may, I would like to highlight section C of the code. If anybody wants to read that, but says to have sufficient reserve consistent with the recorder's plan to capitalize the next technology or other records management upgrade necessary to fulfill the statutory purpose of the fund. Which, forgive me, but that seems a stretch to pay money out of that fund if it's not for
Technology upgrades, yeah.
Because that's technically what you're doing when you contract that out to other companies to do that, right? That's under the technology side. Is that what they, the definition?
Yes.
I mean, that's how I read it.
I mean, that's how you've been doing it. That's, it's been used under that, yeah.
Yes, the perpetuation.
Now you're looking to use it. You guys are going to do the work. Is that right? And then?
Well, yes.
You mentioned this was all based off of the pending approval by the State Board of Accounts for you to be able to do this, right? So they would be signing off on the legality of you being able to do this based off of the C that Chuck just read, right?
It's an ordinance and it's a sworn statement by the recorder saying that there are sufficient funds in order to fulfill the the purpose of the fund, perpetuation of documents. Our, oh, gosh, let's see. Our renewal for our software was, I believe, less than fifteen thousand dollars last year. When we purchased our system, I think it was maybe sixty-five thousand dollars and that was a one-time cost. So I'm not worried about, with the amount of money that we have in the fund now, I'm not worried about running short. If we do, then we wouldn't have to use the money that's allocated for salaries. I mean, I think that's, it would come out every pay period. Is that right?
Seth, and along the lines of what you were thinking, the way this reads is that the county fiscal body, not the State Board of Accounts, certifies her ability to do this.
But I think the State Board of Accounts has to first okay the legality of it, right? Or is it up to us to make sure this is a legal purpose to use the funds? Who's, who's on the hook for this if it comes back and says we use these funds and we should not for this purpose?
It says here that we are. There's a couple places that say that the council is.
It just wouldn't be used. I mean, if we didn't have enough money in the funds, it wouldn't be a request that I would make. And we have an excess of funds.
I appreciate you having, putting things down for someone to do that you feel like it could be done and not sent off to somebody else to do. I do have a little bit of problem thinking that if you're not doing additional hours, that we would need to pay additional money. And I know we're not talking a lot about budget right now, but I guess that's, that's where I'm coming from a little bit.
The, the amount that that money would cover would be basically six hours a week for, I'm sorry, yeah, six hours a week dedicated to that for the deputy and seven hours a week for the recorder, just indexing, which would be documented. I mean, it has to be for State Board of Accounts.
It would have to be documented for taking it out of this fund. However, from what you're telling us, you do already, you know, yeah, you might have to work a little harder on something else, but you evidently have enough time in your office to complete those duties.
We do now.
I know things change and when they change, sometimes you're bombarded with deeds and all kinds of things too, so.
This would be, it would definitely have to get done. Sometimes other things take precedence. Maybe they shouldn't. But this is something that we would definitely have to fulfill in order to meet State Board of Accounts.
And having maybe someone else come in part-time would, would be definitely a plus.
Right. And they would be, they would be perpetuation, they would be indexing as well. Yeah. And as far, I'm sorry, State Board, they've already said, there are many other recording offices throughout the state who are already doing this. So it's nothing new. They just want documentation. They've already outlined in the statute what has to be done as far as the requirements.
It's been annually, each time it's renewed on that ordinance.
Yes, and it's only by the recorder's request, so.
Okay.
Approval fiscal body.
This is not something we are deciding tonight, but it's getting the information from you so that when we get through budget time, we'll be talking about this more.
Yeah. The only other thing is the thirteen thousand dollars requested to be used from the Identification Security Protection Fund. That's also a fund that is funded by the documents that are recorded. Dollar for each document that's recorded goes into that fund. Only the recorder can use that and it's for redaction services and redaction technology for social security numbers. They're not allowed to be on documents. So we have a software program that pays for that. And also this thirteen thousand dollars is going to cover some of our back indexing redaction. There are social security numbers all over old documents, which have to be redacted.
Thank you, Carolyn.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Beth, you're up.
Thanks for letting me come tonight.
Welcome.
I'd love this next week, so I appreciate that.
Hang on, let's find. Okay, I can find your. Got it. Okay. Excuse me.
Okay. So I have three budgets that I'm, that I'm requesting appropriation for. We also have, a clerk has a records perpetuation fund, but ours has to be appropriated. So that's why we asked for that appropriation and which I, working on doing some scanning and indexing on back records also. Requesting, you know, a part-time person. I'm hoping maybe I can get someone from school to come in for the ICE program because I kind of figured at four hours a day, you know, through and, and pay them at fifteen dollars an hour is what I'm requesting. So they could work on doing our scanning and indexing of our whole records. The professional services for thirty thousand, that is for a vendor that I am currently using that is doing some scanning. With that, if there is a due screening and indexing for the project. And they have done a couple batches of ours right now, but we still got quite a bit to go. And we really need to empty out my room because of my next budget that's coming up to explain about the election stuff. So we're trying to get rid of some files and once we do get them scanned, then we request from the court to go ahead and, a court administration at the state to go ahead and destroy those records. So once they are scanned, we can request to get those destroyed. So that's the project we're working on and that's why that records perpetuation. Questions on?
Is your deputy, one deputy have already retired then?
Yes. Yes. Yep. Any other questions on the perpetuation? Okay, the next budget is the clerk's budget. And yes, we are, went from seven deputies to six deputies. So in the request, I was kind of, I had requested a six percent pay increase and that was just based off the inflation rate of eight point two percent from April to April of last year when I was working on this budget. For the elected official, I did add the three thousand dollars that wasn't added to that position when we did eliminate that position, our seventh deputy and increased the deputies, the rest of the deputies. We couldn't increase elected official's salary because elected official's salaries cannot be changed during the year. So for the twenty twenty-three budget, I did ask for the three thousand dollars for the elected official. And then, you know, like I said, we did put in a six percent increase request. Let's see, it looks like the supplies have stayed the same, postage stayed the same, travel has increased and I did do the figures of what it was to go, the clerks association does have a spring conference, a fall conference, an annual conference. Association does have a spring conference, a fall conference, an annual conference, and then AIC has an annual conference. So what we do collect in the records or elected officials' training fund, it doesn't cover all of the cost and I usually always take one deputy, you know, with me to each one of those conferences. So I always just take one, but, but that's just based on what it costs, that's what the, the cost is, you know, to go. Dues and prescriptions, I did increase that a little bit because it is based off of our salaries, okay? So if there's a salary increase, then the dues do go up a little bit. The training, I, since there's kind of two line items that's the same, I eliminated that and added it in with the, um, so we're not having two line items that has the same thing. Copy maintenance, I kept that the same. Questions on that budget?
Good.
Okay, well, the fun one is the election budget. There's just all kinds of changes that's going into effect. We do use, um, a direct recording system for our election and legislation has passed that is now requiring us to use a VV PAT within the ver, our verifiable paper audit trail that goes to each one of our DRE machines. Okay, with that is a new case that comes, so the case stands about six foot tall in ways like, I think they said 55 pounds? So basically, the problem is, we don't have equipment to deliver this stuff anymore. So I am asking for additional amount in my other services because what most counties have went to already has been renting either a cargo van, you know, U-Haul, whatever it takes to deliver these equipments to our vote centers. So of course, you know, that costs, you know, the delivery truck. I either visit, you know, a local business, I could use a cargo van or if I just had to use like a U-Haul truck and of course, I'm, I'm going to have to pay somebody, you know, to unload all of these equipment and pick it all up. So unfortunately, this change is going to cost additional funds, you know, to be able to do. I have always delivered all of the equipment to all of the early voting vote centers and we have three that we do for early voting and currently it'll fit, I have a Equinox and I can get exactly everything I need in there with these new cases, there's no way. I don't even have a piece of equipment that will work to get this in there.
Beth, is there, is there legal ramifications on transportation as far as continuity?
Yes, yes. We have to have a bipartisan team and they do have to, there's, there's paperwork that has to be signed by the carrier, couriers that pick up and deliver.
Technically, that's the way we've been operating forever, transporting those in and out.
We can, there, there is, there's a form, there's an A and a B form, ones for taking out, ones for bringing back, and it is actually on there for a courier service to sign or you get the bipartisan team. So most, most counties anymore have had to go to this because there's just so much equipment. And, you know, for election day, we usually take 10 panels out, so that's 10 great big pieces of equipment, you know, that's like 50 pounds plus a piece, you know, to deliver. And my thought is that we will deliver, you know, the night before election and most likely pick up the morning after the election, you know, because the card readers that we have to use is done through a card reader, so they will bring that. The only problem we have is if a card doesn't read, then we will have to go to the vote centers to pick up the machine to manually pick the machine up. That happens very rarely, but it has happened, so, you know, I mean, that's just a, a chance you just take, you know, to, to do this because there's just, we can't have one driver basically or a pair of drivers, you know, go to all these places on election night, we wouldn't get done till, you know, midnight. So we, we still want them to be able to pack and seal all the equipment and it all is done with a seal and it's recorded seals on all of the equipment. So everything would still be sealed and locked. And that day we bring in everything that they need for us to read the results and we still get everything done basically at the same time as just picking up the equipment. Most likely, we'll probably start picking up some in the evening, but some of them will be the next day. Five vote centers, you know, so, you know, we might pick two up the night of and the other three the next morning.
That's a bolts of it, you know, enterprise or a local U-Haul, you know, that's not exorbitant to rent a van for a day or two, it's, it's not, because I'm sitting here thinking, using county, county equipment, but the, the transport van from the sheriff is the only thing that would be weather tight and that's probably not a good idea.
Because, I mean, you know, I, well, I have a pickup truck, but, you know, I'm not so sure what the weather or a stock trailer, I don't think I want to put them in that, but, yeah, so.
Is that what you were thinking of probably renting?
That's what I was kind of, and I was kind of basing, I mean, you know, they advertise, what, $24.95 a day?
And they trade for mileage and everything else, it's not quite, that couldn't drive.
It's not that cheap, but, but still, you know, like I said, we have five vote centers, two of them's in town, you know, so, you know, we will have to.
A lot of miles.
Southern Wells area, Zanesville area and Ossie, and so, you know, it is a little bit.
Another thought is, another thought is just a small enclosed trailer too that rolls in and out.
Absolutely.
That would be sufficient too, probably, which is cheap.
Yes, I'm thinking that we could probably look at the options with our election board, we would kind of, you know. Tend around to see what's going to be the most cost efficient, but I, I think that we need to add that into our budget, I'm, you know, and, you know, just to help cover that cost of what it might be. So that's what, that's why we're seeing the increases in that. And then capital equipment, um, there is, right now we use Verizon jet packs for our internet service. When we go to the vote centers, there's a new router that's available that's a little bit better, well, it's a lot better actually, you know, you get better reception and everything and anyhow, to get five of the routers, it costs, um, I think it was $1,250 currently, so there may be a little bit of an increase because everything keeps going up a little bit, so, you know, that's why I put in for the request for 1,500, just in case there is a little bit of an increase by next year. Now I have one more thing. Okay, um, because this would, you know, consider with budget time too, so you can discuss. Like I said, we did have to change, we do use the DREs now, we're going to have to use the VV PATs, okay? So, you know, the state is buying the VV PATs and these cases, so it's no cost to the county. My concern is down the road, there may be cost to the county to buy new election equipment or upgrade the election equipment that we have. The DREs that we have right now are, let's see, getting close to 20 years old, you know? There's no problems with them, you know, the few issues we've had, they've always been able to be repaired, but I'm just afraid sometime they are going to break down, so I would like to start a reserve back to either replace these. It's not going to be there in my term, it's probably going to be in the next administration that's going to come in and, but I think that we're going to have to do some upgrades for those and we have 76 or 78 machines and they're like 3,000, well, probably close to $4,000 apiece. So if you take that times 78 machines, you know, that's going to be a pretty good penny. And or if the state at some point decides not to use DREs at all, you know, our federal government come down more low, you know, then we're looking at new election equipment. Now currently, they're going to pay for what we have to do the upgrades right now, but in the future, maybe not. So I think it might be a good idea to look at either a fund, which is there's two levied funds that we could use for election equipment, okay, but then that would be against our, you know, levy that we have right now, or we can do a home rule fund and I talked to Lisa a little bit about that too, and I, and my election board also, we had a meeting and we kind of think that might be a better way to go, that we use, you know, some of the unused, unappropriated money at the end of each year to put into this fund, so we start building this fund up. I'd like to get it at least $500,000 because I know it's going to cost at least that amount of money to do a new system and if we even upgraded what we have now, that would be probably at least 3,000 or $300,000. So we thought, Lisa and I, she gave me some figures on what we've done on the average of the last five years of what has been left of excess budget and it was like 524,000, then you have to take away the 91,000 that got encumbered, so, you know, roughly $400,000. That was left in the budget on the average of the last five years, and I'm reading that right, right? Okay. So my thought was that we put $100,000 at the end of each year into a home rule fund for the next five years, if the money's there. Now, if for some reason we use all of the funds, you know, we, we wouldn't, so, and maybe we can just even have it if, you know, if we, if we do have an average of 400,000 left, we pay, you know, 500 or 100,000 into this fund for the next five years and then we would probably look at redoing the fund at that time if we wanted to continue to put some in. Or if you'd like to go with a smaller amount, 75,000, 50,000, you know, it's just going to take longer to get it up, but I think that we need to have some kind of backup to replace equipment or, or if we have to do new in the future, so.
And that's out of your county clerk's budget you're talking about or the election?
No, that's all, that's countywide general budget.
Oh, okay, okay, general, okay, okay.
Yeah, countywide general fund budget.
That's quite a lot.
No, I don't have that much.
Yeah, I was going to say, I didn't think you typically.
Also, I'm not budgeting very well.
Have a fuck, you know, but. Only for that purpose?
So I did, I did want to put that out so you, it could be discussed maybe a little bit to see if that's something.
Okay, that's something we'll have to discuss, yeah.
What happens down the road if we find out that we got this giant pot of money that was not needed, can we pull that back to general or is it going to stay there only for that purpose?
Or do we just have it put in rainy day and then use it as?
Give us more flexibility.
If we do an ordinance, it's only specifically for that amount, it builds up to this and we find out we never need it, how do you pull that back?
If you have a special fund, it's 500,000 and you made a special fund for that and then you only needed 300,000, it would be better to put it in a rainy day and then use it as you need it.
Get more flexibility.
No, we'll touch on that.
That's going to be a budget thing.
Budget time, so we don't have to decide that tonight, but thank you, Beth.
Got the budget, yep.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Beth.
Thanks, Beth.
Thank you.
Yep.
Have fun at your conference. It's an administration conference.
Okay, next we had Connor coming in for a highway garage update, but he's not going to be here. What is going on there is they have bids that they're opening later this week, so there wasn't really an update that he could give us. And so the last item on our agenda is the, the project cost not to exceed, so we're not going to be able to do that either tonight. So we're going to wait probably for another month, so we'll have sufficient numbers and we make good decisions on what we're going to be able to spend on the highway garage once the bids are out and they'll be, have gone, been gone through and gone back and forth with potential vendors, so we're going to push those two things off. So next up, Steve.
Thank you, counsel. So it's good to be with you tonight. So I wanted to come before the council and kind of share with you all, because we're, we're all in this together, we're all taxing units and I wanted to make sure that you were fully informed with what's going on with Southern Wells Community Schools. The board have passed a resolution in July to send to the Department of Local Government Finance an extension of, and a renewal of our general fund referendum. And that general fund referendum has been the same rate since 2009, so we're asking that that be extended for another eight years. The Department of Local Government Finance has approved that, so I wanted to, to make you all aware of that. I think coming up August 16th, we're going to go to the election board and share that information with them so that we can get that approved language on the ballot for our voters in Southern Wells Community Schools. So back in 2009, the, the state made significant reductions to general funds for schools and Southern Wells was not alone in that, as every school in the state of Indiana took those big hits. And at the time, it was determined that we needed a general fund referendum, so they went to the taxpayers and taxpayers approved that, 12.7 cents as part of the tax rate. That has carried forward and in 2016, voters again approved that referendum. So that moved forward from 16. The board at this point has decided, let's, let's do it this year to renew that. The current referendum has another year on it, but if we do it now during a general election time, corporation doesn't have to pay.
Yeah.
So it's like, okay, this is the time to do it. So school corporation's going to move forward with that. DLGF has approved that language, so we're going to come before the election board, get that on the ballot and, and voters will have a choice there. So the answer to me is always a yes to Southern Wells, so that's kind of where it's at. I wanted to kind of share a little information with you too about referendums in the state of Indiana. Since 2008, there have been over 200 referenda placed on ballots for school corporations. Over half of the state school districts have had referendums. And it kind of goes back to that reduction in state funds and, and moving from local property tax to state funding of, of schools, so that has had a, a difficult impact on some school corporations. Southern Wells has been so conservative in its budgeting that we've been able to use that referendum wisely. The plan continues. What that money is used for, just so everyone's fully informed about that, is for retaining teachers, it's for maintaining class sizes, supporting career and college readiness, as well as operation fund support. So basically, it, it helps the school corporation keep those class sizes low. So in grades K1 and 2, we have, try to cap them at 20 students per class and then grades 3 through 6 and then into the junior high, keep those classes no more than 25. There's some classes, you know, PE or band, that might be greater than that, but I mean, general rule of thumb is to keep classes that, that low. Class size does have an effect on educational achievement for, for students. That has been proven at Southern Wells. I mean, the standardized scores are significant because of those lower class sizes. So I think our parents appreciate that and that's why that's been approved in the past. So we're coming before you tonight just to kind of let you know that we're going to proceed with that. The board approved that, DLGF has approved that, and then we're going to share it with the election board on August 16th. So that's where we're at with that and if there's any questions, I'll certainly entertain anything that, that you might have questions of. But I wanted to make sure that you were informed of that because we all generate levy and I, I think it's, it's only fair that I share that information with you.
Very much appreciated.
Yeah, thank you for keeping us in the loop. It doesn't always occur for referendum, so appreciate it.
I think Jim and I were on council when that, 2009, we were about the only two members here originally, when that first came up, so.
Okay, and at that time, county council approved it.
Yeah, exactly.
Little different change in the law now, so, but I just want to make sure that you were informed, so.
They're a lot older than the rest of us.
I know, I know.
Yeah.
Thanks for your honesty.
All right, guys, Mark Amoresco, you're up.
Good evening, everyone. For the record, my name is Mark Heerbrand, I'm a senior account executive with Amoresco. With me tonight, I have Dan Nemeth, who is our project manager on the Falls County Jail project.
Thank you.
As well as Brad Driver, who is our project development engineer, been involved in the development of the project and also starting on the commissioning of the project. I wanted to apologize first, when you go through this presentation, it's kind of, some of the pages are put in backwards on there. I guess I'm the one to blame on, on it, so I apologize on there. If you turn to page two, what I'd like to do is just start with just a scope summary, these are some of the items that we talked about that were approved for the project. There was a lighting retrofit that was, it was throughout the entire facility, interior and exterior as well and included even the parking lot lighting. We also did HVAC upgrades throughout the, the entire jail as well as some temperature controls that needed to be updated, that were older and were not functioning very well at, at the time and they were having a lot of comfort issues. In addition, a new roof replacement, this was definitely needed. There were several leaks that we found on, during that, that they've weathered through for many years. We've got a new white ballasted roof up there, 90 mil. And then also, really to help with the COVID requirements and what. And then also, really to help with the COVID requirements and what had happened with COVID-19 and some of the things that happened in the jail and social distancing, the booking area needed to be remodeled so that you had adequate social distancing that was needed through there. So a lot of that throughout the booking area, the Sallyport and several other areas will have been remodeled and we're continuing that. There's domestic hot water issues, and we'll talk a little bit about that and some of the improvements, as well as a lot of savings that we found, because we found some leaks that had been occurring for years underneath, that was going underneath in the tunnel on there. And then water conservation efforts that we made throughout all the cells and throughout the building, as well as a parking lot replacement and reconstruction. I wanted to, too, to commend our partners on this project, Jackson Control or Jackson Construction, and also Elevatus that's on the architectural side. If you get the chance to go over to the jail, they've done a fantastic job on here. And we meet every two weeks with the sheriff, their staff, to go through everything on there. And I'll have Dan talk a little bit about, we've got some pictures in there, he'll briefly skim through that and then kind of talk to you about where we are, our schedule and budget.
So back to that scope summary, so when, it's like, it's one large project, but nine individual projects. So we've looked at this project as, you know, we're gonna split them up and then like install and close out project by project. And then it'll all lead us to the final completion of the project. And right now, that's looking to be towards the end of the year. We're at about 70% complete, it's about 72% to be exact with the project right now. Some of these, what's called ECMs in the scope summary, are energy conservation measures, referral along in others. But that was, that's due primarily to, a lot of things you've been hearing in the news, like with material deliveries and shipping delays and so forth, that we've had to experience here, which has kind of affected our schedule to, with some of the EPMs, and it didn't, you know, for example, with the roofing project. You know, many construction projects were having issues with delivery of roofing supplies and roofing materials, not this one. So we're able to get that roofing project focused on getting that done, and that, that's actually finishing right now. So we can close out that roofing replacement ECM 5. The job's not completed yet, but that, that one is complete. And we meet, like Mark was saying, every two weeks with the sheriff, and we review all, everything that's happening on the job and what it's gonna take to, to close out a particular ECM. So, but, but getting back to the, to the work, it's really getting the jail up with, to the technology level that it needs to be today. So when you look at the LED lights, when you look at all the upgrades that are happening with the mechanical equipment, it's all current, current technology and very efficient equipment that was designed by the Amaresco team and Elevatus to put into the jail system. This, and I can't underestimate this ECM 4, which is a control system, fully automated control of the jail facility, no hot rooms, everything comfortable. The programming that analyzes the equipment performance to make sure everything is running efficiently, everything is gonna be on schedule, there'll be reset temperatures, it's gonna be really nice for them once it's done. And that, that particular ECM will be finished by the end of the year. So I'm just trying to highlight a couple of, of these ECMs that are really gonna provide value to the jail, to the staff.
Can you remind me what kind of year guarantee the roof is gonna be, your roof replacement? What, how many years will that be guaranteed?
So it's a 30-year warranty through Firestone from EPDM. And I know Mark may have had his notes wrong, so that's a black EPDM roof, it is not bausse, it's fully adhered. And so the roof will have a 30-year warranty from Firestone. And then we had labor, labor and material from the installing contractor, we had that listed as a five-year warranty in their specifications when we bid that.
And who will keep that guarantee? Is that in writing and that'll be in the sheriff's office or something?
Yeah, so Firestone actually has already made one appearance out on the job site. They will be coming again, and they've actually, on one of the parapet walls, as you can't see on the backside, they've actually written on there about how they, they have a numbering system on there. And then it'll be important to have actually that, that roof annually inspected by Firestone dealer to be able to, to make sure that the warranty is being.
The sheriff's office will keep that?
Yes, yes.
On file?
I'm assuming the sheriff would have.
I don't know where else we'd want it.
I don't know how else you guys manage your assets for building and stuff like that, but.
It'll be on the plan.
Everybody keeps looking.
Maintenance guy there because you get a new sheriff, they forget to get it done. Somebody drops the ball on that, it doesn't get done.
But yes, we got an asset planning system we can talk on, but yeah.
Okay.
But you know what, we're really in the, just, just today with, with Brad, we're now looking at the closeout phase of, of this project and, and what we're gonna do with commissioning and verification that everything is installed and working properly to specifications. The architect comes out, Elevatus comes out. Every couple of weeks, she does a review, Jennifer's her name, she does a complete review to make sure the job is installed properly there. To the, to the compliments of the construction crew, there hasn't been any issues. She does a very thorough review, documents with pictures. We're out there every week, we document the job with pictures, we meet with the staff. So communication has been excellent, but there's a lot of construction that happened at the jail, and we're finally getting through this real busy time, these past couple of months of all the work that has been.
Those pictures will become part of your closeout documents as well, put those on a thumb drive of the different ECMs that are listed and they'll be labeled underneath there, so that that way, if there's ever a question in the future, you guys can go back and see as the job is progressing. That's one thing the architect is doing on the new construction part of it, is that, you know, they're coming out as part of their contract with us, and they're reviewing the different phases that's going in and making sure that this is what we specified, this is how we asked for it to be installed, this is how it is installed, so that there isn't, if there's ever a question that come up, you guys will have documentation. Of course, we're, we're your partner for several years on this project, but that way, we've got some sort of documentation about that nowadays, right? So it's, with technology available, I'm here to help, you know, some of your departments, you know, how, how they record keep and things like that, so we'll have that same process that we've been going through with construction to be able to like.
So like this closeout package that Brad is referring to is all hard copies and electronic copies, so you'll have both media, and it'll have all the warranty information in it, all the verification, all the, all the check out, the commission, it'll all be in there. So that'll be, that's a very good thing. If you do get out to the jail, you could look at the Sallyport brickwork that was done, it matches perfectly to the, it does, they did a really good job on matching up the brick to the existing. You'd never know, like, it's the goal of, if you're gonna put something new on something old, you want it to look, so they did a real good job on, on that matching, so. And you could see some of the improvements, if you just look at the pictures, like with the lighting, you could see, you know, a dramatic improvement with the LED lighting in the, in the kitchen area, so it's, it's just been.
Kitchen is nice today compared to what, what it used to be.
Yes, yeah. And then the, the comfort alone, you know, I mean, you can, you could, you could remotely Bob Muntz, the maintenance guy, will be able to remotely set that temperature in any of those areas, so he doesn't have to drive in anymore or react, do any kind of manual.
I assume there's multiple zones for, for heating?
Yes.
So if you don't like the people in the back, you can turn up the heat?
That's right, exactly.
The DOC that said comfort temperature.
I understand. I'm just kidding.
Yeah, so that, I, you know, that's basically, you know, improvements in, in all areas. We did, you know, if you, if you looked down at domestic hot water issue, if you could just kind of guess what Mark was referring to, where there was that water leak that they identified, it was.
It was under slab.
Under slab for a very long period.
Can you just explain how you found that and the excessive water usage?
Yeah, so there was excessive water usage out there. So during our development, development process and investigation that we went through of trying to identify that with Bob's help out there, that was one of the things that when I first came on site in 2019 to do a, to do an audit, you know, Junior, at the time, the maintenance supervisor, had shared with me that, you know, he continuously had water coming into his ductwork for the inmate areas for, for one of the air handlers. And, and you could look down in there and you see all the water. There had been originally, when those air handlers had been installed, originally, they actually, since the piping is underground, they put in sump pumps down there just in case water would get in, right? Well, it's a good thing that those sump pumps were in there, because Junior had shared with me that in one of his units, he continuously had water, he said, for several years. And so, so, you know, as we investigated, we did water samples, we were trying to identify, is this groundwater, is this, is this, is this conditioned water, is something leaking somewhere? And, and, and then as we just kept digging, he kept digging and asking Bob questions out there, he said, you know, we have a, a shower that seems to never get hot, never get hot, never get hot. And as we started investigating and started shooting the floor with temperature, with thermal infrareds, that's when we started identifying under slab that something was leaking. We then worked with your local public works department, with your water group, and we had them come out and install an interval water meter for us. And with Bob's help at nighttime, between certain hours, between 12 and 3:00 in the morning, we shut down some water so that we could see what other water was being used and if, if it was in that area. And so we slowly learned that, yes, there was a, quite a bit of water leaking, it was over 100 gallons per hour. And, and so that was hot water, right? So that was water that you were using natural gas to heat to be able to sand underneath there. And so then, once we got under contract with you guys, you know, we, we had a line item in there thinking, okay, well, how much is this gonna be, what's gonna happen? It ended up being a lot more for us to dig, dig down there and get that thing fixed, but we did. And mysteriously, guess what happened to the leak in the, in the air handler? It went away. So we're no longer dumping water down into your supply drunk, ducts or your return ducts. That was air that was being circulated and returned from the inmate area. So obviously, you know, you can imagine what would have happened there if something ever, somebody ever, ever got sick. So we cleaned up potential issues for you guys, which is gonna save you guys some, some money for natural gas, as well as for water usage as well out there.
Sump pumps were taking this water away the whole time? Wow, I mean, that'd have been, yeah, that'd have been something you kind of figured would have been.
I mean, you, you were getting water down in, in the duct, probably at least almost 18 inches at times. Yeah, it was, yeah.
How long do you think that was on?
Any idea?
Well, it was 2019 when I met Junior out there the first time, and he said several years, so I, I would say.
Water usage that.
How would we have not done something?
Going through a lot of sump pumps, I think.
I think people just kind of thought that the sump pumps were put down there and it's groundwater, and we've got this, you know, we've got this farm field right next door and all this kind of stuff. But the thing that I kept digging is how come it's not happening to the other unit, but it's only happening to this unit? And so, you know, it was just our investigation of keep digging, keep digging, there's gotta be some solution to, to why, why this. And I have questions I would ask, like, so when you're having a dry period right now, are you still seeing water down there? Well, yeah, well, something's going on, so, yeah.
I'm glad that's fixed.
So if we go to the schedule update page, just a brief update on, on the schedule. So the new, the new addition area in the Sallyport, we hired a general contractor, that's Jackson's work. And then we're managing the renovation work in the existing jail. We have subcontractors do that work. So the new construction work that Jackson did started in November of 2021, and they're looking at finishing September. Now, right now, Poly Jail is the firm that does all the, the jail hardware, you know, the doors and the security aspect, that's just started this week. Painting is in process right now, they're doing the finish plumbing, the finish electrical, they're looking at cabinets, Karen's looking at countertops, you know, all that kind of stuff the next couple of months. We're gonna start our commissioning, we'll bring the architect out, she'll do the inspection. So concurrent with that finishing now, the next couple of months is the work that we've got in, in the, inside, which is the mechanical systems, the lighting, the paving and the roof, which we're working on, Amaresco's responsible for in parallel with the construction work. It's just, you know, the, how all these ECMs gotta come, come together. We're targeting for all the work to be done by the end of December, but that new addition works, we're targeting end of September. So, and, and we keep the sheriff briefed on this every, every couple of weeks. They're on board with everything and with the dates, and there's, there's issues that surface every day. We address them, we communicate, we respond. As you can imagine, it's a large construction project. I wanted to highlight this commissioning is ongoing. That's what Amaresco brings to the table, is that not only do you have the, the general contracting work expertise of construction management, but we also have the expertise with the commissioning, where we have, you know, guys like Mark and Brad, who can come in there and, and commission the contractor's work and make sure it meets specification, codes, compliance, inspections, all that. This was for last month's presentation, but we're at about 72% now. Just to correct that, we're currently on schedule. And then the last page is just a budget update page, just to highlight, make you guys aware that there, you know, there are cost overruns, that these have all been absorbed by Amaresco as part of the work. You know, obviously, everybody's aware of price escalations on materials, it's, has not been passed on, it's been all absorbed. We talked about this fixes to the domestic hot water, the sumps, improvements, these are all because of the work, equipment performs better, and we're fixing issues as we go along that were not installed properly from the start. So if we find a mechanical, electrical issue that's not right, we fix it. We don't pass that cost on, it's, it's part of the work. Same thing, there were some issues on the roof about how to attach roofing properly to secure it properly to the parapet walls. Again, we, we fix it. If it, the policy, if it, if it needs to be done right, we'll, we'll get it right. And that's, that's how we've looked at everything. You know, if it's not right, we're gonna do what's right to get the job done. And the, the one thing I do want to highlight is the structural scanning. There was a picture in there with these mechanical systems that needed to be replaced within the jail. So, man, it's an existing operating facility, so we had to remove these big systems that were inside either a office area or the sheriff's office, or the kitchen, or the lobby. It's a huge inconvenience to, you know, remove this equipment. Then when we went to put the new piece of equipment back in, we found out that, you know, it didn't match up necessarily with the precast concrete structural pieces that support and hold equipment. So we hired a, like a scan, a professional scanning x-ray firm to make sure that when we x-rayed the, the concrete support beams, you need to, you, you can't damage the integrity of the beam that supports the roof. So you need to know exactly where you put a support bolt, and the scanning system tells you, okay, you're gonna put a bolt here, and they come out in the action market, and you put, put a bolt here, you know, as you go along for these 15 systems that we put in. Again, just something I wanted to highlight that was kind of an unforeseen issue that we took care of. There's also an owner's allowance that, it's a, you know, we've, we've been using and discussing with the sheriff, they're adding just a small little concrete area outside for the staff, for a break area. There was a request for some upgrades to door hardware that they approved, and they're looking at doing some painting, some additional painting with inside the facility to match the new work. Basically, it comes down to, right now, we're looking at about $109,000 left in the owner's allowance, the discretion of the jail to determine if they want to do other work.
And how much was that owner's allowance to start?
That was $125,000. So the, the break area was 2,500, the, the upgrades for the door hardware was, I don't have the number yet, I think it was about 10,000. The, the painting is, what's the balance, 25 for 12, for about 5,000.
And that allowance came about because, if you remember, we, during development and engineering, we found out that we, the state was telling us we were gonna have to have a fire protection system installed in the new areas that we were renovating only. So the new area that was being put on, the square footage in the book in, plus some of that, that conference center that was being, that was being modified within the jail, we worked with Elevatus, with the state, and we were able to get a variance on that. So the money that we had in the job for fire protection, if we were gonna have to bring in a new six-inch line in from the street, fire pump, sprinkler heads, all that kind of stuff. And so then, those dollars then that, that we saved by not having to do that, that became your guys' owner allowance. That money will be returned back to the county. That money, um, will be returned back to the county, um, if that hundred and nine dollars isn't, is it used? If you, if you, the county, do not request anything else from us, that hundred and nine dollars will be returned back to the county. So, um, and, and that's the things that have been requested of us, um, out, out of those items there.
That's good to me.
So, this whole project, we only had a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar allowance, but that was actually supposed to be for that fire suppression that's not going to be there now?
That was, that was, that was, there was never an allowance in there, an owner's allowance in the, in the project.
Okay.
Prior, prior to that.
There was never allowance in there.
About because of that?
Afterwards. Because we didn't do that.
Yeah, because, yeah. So, I think what, what, some discussions is that we're not going to have to do the fire protection, we got a variance from the state. What do you guys want to do since that money was already part of the contract? And I think it became an owner allowance to use as something would be requested and, and approved by the county owner. So, we don't have a right to use that money for.
Sheriff just can't make a decision, use it for something else, he's got to come to us to get the.
Yes, I'm assuming that.
We didn't want to speak for him.
Checks and balances.
We, we didn't want to speak, but we just wanted to let you know that this is where it's at.
Yep.
Yeah.
That's good.
Were there any other savings on the project that, that you guys received, um, that would be able to come back to the county?
None at this time of proceeding. No, no contractors.
We will be doing just like what we did many years ago when we did your courthouse project back in probably two thousand and two or somewhere around in there, it was that long ago. But we do measurement and verification, so what we do is we're taking your utilities, we're monitoring, we're looking to make sure that they meet the size requirements and the operations of your building. We put together a measurement and verification report, um, on how the building is operating each year. It's a state requirement, we have to give that, have to send that down to the State Board of Accounts, um, each year, um, as we've contracted on here, to make sure that you are getting, um, some of the savings that you're getting from the lighting and some of the controls and things like that, that, that we put in our contract, to make sure that you get those savings.
I'm more talking about the construction savings that there, you might have found while going through this whole project.
Not that I'm aware of at all, unless you guys.
No, I'm working on.
Any other questions? Get a chance, I know it's not a sexy thing to do to go to the jail, but please go check it out.
Yeah. Yeah, I've been out there, but not here.
I keep going by, and I go, nah, not today. I don't even know how they even park it right, you know?
Yeah, the nursing contractor is, is vacating all, most of their stuff in that east parking lot by the end of this week, we'll be gone.
Oh, okay, so there will be.
Open it up.
We'll be hopefully within the next six to eight weeks, hopefully transitioning people back over to the west parking lot, so that we can start on the east renovation of that whole east side. So, you'll see big changes in that whole landscaped area. Those islands are coming out, those two islands, the trees, the islands, we're making that all, that's all being removed, and they're saying new lighting will be over there on the east side. So, in the next couple of months, you'll see some big changes on the, on the whole east side.
Well, the sheriff said we could park on the grass along.
Yeah, I've seen that some. It, it feels like, you know, like these fests, these fairs, when they park you on the grass, it's, I feel like it's, I was looking today, though, it's not damaged, but we'll reseed if there's any, you know, any seeding, grass, we'll, we'll take care of that, you know?
I've seen they add some of the big vehicles there parked in the grass today, and I go, good thing the ground's nice and hard.
Well, the big, you know, we're at the point of the project where we just have a few mechanical systems to lift onto the roof, but for the most part, that big equipment is all going.
As we're closing out, we'll, we'll get on the agenda to, to come back and give you an update and where everything's at when we close out. And then, we'll also try to work with your maintenance staff to put together a preventative maintenance agreement on there, so that makes sure that the, the equipment gets taken care of. And you, and you make that thing last for another twenty-five to thirty-five years.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Have a good evening.
You too, same thanks.
All right, Darren, I think we're ready for you.
I was, I was out there in March, was it March or April?
What do we need now? This, welcome.
Hello. My name is Darren Bates, my company's data pit style. A few of you look familiar to me. First question is, uh, how many of you do not understand what caps are? Cap one, two, and three? Looks like all of you understand what, uh, caps are then. Okay, over, it started in two thousand and eight, and the state had about six or seven different lips that you could target different things. And about every two to three years, they've been eliminating those. So, pretty much, we're down to just the three. They have four, but the, uh, one that Lisa and I talked to and emailed back and forth eight, nine times with the state, and then a forty-five minute conversation with them. It's, the software can't handle it, and it's too arbitrary. Uh, it's just, it's crazy is what it is, and they're going to eliminate it another two years, they already told me anyways. The biggest problem I had was that I'm about the only one left. Uh, in, in government, I'm not in government, I work with county governments, but everyone at the state level is pretty much gone that started this whole thing. And I had to educate a few of them of where it started and say, well, you know, like the one you had qualifying res, which meant, uh, homeowners rentals, uh, whether it was a personal rental or a, a, a commercial billing rental, uh, mobile home land that you put on there. Uh, bottom line, they did way, they're five years ago and didn't really tell anyone about it. Uh, they still did the math for you, but the math wasn't matching what I had, because I have the original math, and they just, for no better words, potluck guessed it and gave it you percentages. And the fact you're rearranging, uh, your lit, and I guess it got messed up, what, a year or two ago? Last year. The bottom line is you don't have a choice, you can't use it anymore. So, we're down to cap one, two, and three, uh, that protects taxpayers, you can only use cap one, two, and three to give them credits. I don't really know where you're going with it, because back when you froze your levy, uh, you were lied to by the state, you didn't even need credits at all, because you locked your property tax down here, you didn't even give credits. The story they gave, not just you, eight of my counties I work with, was that, you know, the state's doing away with all their credits. So, you better do your own credit, because we're going to yank them all the way. Well, when you froze them down here, you didn't need them. The whole point was, you have not needed, uh, credits because you haven't had cap losses to speak of. The only losses you've had is what your grandfather did in on over sixty-five circuit breakers. Uh, over, that means is if you're a senior citizen, you can't pay more than two percent of what you paid last year. And in your case, uh, roughly, for round numbers, a hundred thousand dollars, you can't collect. If the percent is zero, it's zero, and you're stuck with it. So, um, what you can do, if you still want to give credits, uh, which you're losing about a hundred and ten thousand, a hundred thousand to seniors, ten to twelve thousand dollars everywhere else, cap one, two, three, all the different, twelve different buckets, you're only losing about twelve thousand dollars. But you're throwing one point seven million dollars of income taxes against the twelve thousand dollars. All you're doing is reducing different people's tax bills, mostly homeowners. Uh, so, at that point, you're, uh, being biased against people that rent, because they don't get any, uh, benefits. Uh, if you wanted to keep what you have, what you, I went back five years, if you want to continue to give credits to landlords and apartment complexes and mobile homes, the problem is, uh, cap two also includes your nursing homes and your agricultural land. And that pulls away from that money, so the only way we can get to where you were doing it before was to give fifteen percent to cap two and eighty-five percent to homeowners. As years go by, you're going to have to, uh, as you keep increasing your taxes, you know, maxing out your levies like everyone does, uh, eventually, you'll have to keep reducing that eighty-five down to eighty, down to seventy, to start combating the losses that you're going to have. As you've been in the meeting here, I've been hearing, you know, you're all trying to do the best, every unit of government is trying to do their, uh, being frugal and not spend money. Problem is, is, you know, this year alone, everything keeps going up and up and up. So, uh, as I said, the credits to bills have been going away. Like I said, they had seven of them, down, basically down to three. The flip side of that, uh, not property tax relief against bills, but different ways of paying your bills. Uh, the example is you are familiar, shares. You all get in, income tax that goes, uh, to the different units of government. You have, uh, public safety, uh, and in your case, you also had a, uh, correctional facility. Now, it used to be you had to go to the state and petition legislators to present it and say you want so much for a jail. Well, they changed that, and now you're able to do up to point two, I think you have point zero seven. Uh, I'm going from memory at this point, and correct me anytime. I'm good with numbers, lousy with names. So, you have a correction facility at point zero seven, you got, uh, a public safety that encompasses, uh, county government and all cities and towns. Now, the catch is, the crazy math that they come up with, um, it gets split up different ways, uh, on public safety, as ceded gets split up different ways. Again, it's only county government and cities and towns, townships, libraries and schools don't get any of this money. Uh, but there's a, one of the, what you're not utilizing is PSAP. What it is, is nine-one-one. Uh, I was told before the meeting that right now, your city of Bluffton, uh, is a nine-one-one, but you give them every quarter so much money for your, um, share of it or, or expenses. Uh, in other words, your general fund through property taxes that are subject to cap losses are helping fund nine-one-one, where you actually could be using income tax. And right off the top, instead of the public safety getting divvied up between all the units by some crazy math the state has, you can say, oh, hey, we need a half million dollars for nine-one-one. Not just the salaries, but the insurance and the PSAP and the equipment and the building. The bottom line is PSAP means everything about nine-one-one can be paid for right off the top. And then, what's left, so if you allocate two million dollars, you need a half a million for nine-one-one, the other one, half million is done by the crazy math of percentages, but the top pays for your nine-one-one. Uh, that's one way. Uh, the new one they started this year for next year is EMS. Uh, for medical, uh, you probably know better than I do, uh, what, uh, ambulance service and what else?
I'm not sure.
Okay. Bottom line is they keep making new buckets to target bills for you, so you can pay it. Because frankly, every one of you tall, called the, uh, DLGF, they are frustrated with all counties that you keep giving credits to taxpayers. The whole point of, the credits originally were to combat the losses against caps, not to reduce their bills. Cap one, two, and three was the, the bills, the credits were to accommodate any cap losses. And the, again, the mistake that happened, you were sold a bill of goods, that you froze your levy, and you went with credits. Uh, if you had froze your levy, you didn't need the credits. Where Grand County, uh, they didn't do a frozen levy, and they went with a one percent. You're at point two-three rate now. You've knocked it down, uh, year, last year or year before, uh, from whatever it was, half or point six, it, it was higher, though. Uh, you are at least reducing it to try to combat other areas to pay bills. Uh, like I said, you as a county, uh, not county government, as a county, you're losing roughly a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Most of my county, I, I'm in fifty-four counties, by the way, every night I get tax data and processed every night, fifty-four counties. And you are, I think, the bottom of a hundred and thirty thousand of loss. I, I get counties that lose tens of millions of dollars in cap losses. They're hurting. You're doing fantastic, but you could do a lot better, for no better, forgive me, I'm going to say it, is you're wasting your income taxes by giving credits out when you should be paying for nine-one-one, EMS, uh, as the recorder, or, um, no, it was, uh, the, the clerk, the clerk was talking about needing new equipment. That's easy enough, that, uh, your income tax would be shifted over to ceded money, because Lisa and I know that you can pay about ninety-nine percent of all your bills through ceded money. See, that, that's not anymore for ten years, that not meant, give it to businesses. Uh, Fountain County, they were in a lawsuit because they didn't fix their, uh, elevator for the handicap, because the only way to get to the treasurer's office was on the second floor. And they said, here's the stairs, because the elevator's broken for two years. I said, why aren't you using your economic development money? Oh, no, that's to give the business, to encourage them to come here. I said, no, it's to pay bills. You got so many buckets now, eight, probably eight or nine of them, alphabet soup, that you can put things into to pay your bills. And, and then, it takes your general budget down. Because right now, you're trying to budget out your general fund to pay for this, pay for that, when you got lit money, income tax money, that can be paying these things. So, I'm not saying you have to do it, I'm just here giving you the hard numbers, and I know numbers. And I helped, uh, Huntington County, three years ago, eliminate their property tax credits. Washington County, eliminate their property tax credits. Pulaski, for twelve years, was the highest income tax in the state at three point two five, I think, or three point one-eight. Now, they're below three, because they literally didn't rearrange it, they just cut it out and said, we're not collecting anymore. So, they went from one to eight, the highest income tax, but their number eight is the number one. Uh, Lawbase for two years was number one, I worked with them, and I got them to cut their, uh, property tax relief from one percent down to a half. And then, they implemented PSAP and shares, and increased shares and economic development so they can pay their bills. But they became, because I, some of their council didn't listen, and they actually up there by point one, so they became number one of the highest income in the, tax in the state. And, uh, Marcy, the auditor, says, you know, we, we're not striving to be number one in that respect. I got them down to, I think, three or four now, they're not the highest anymore, because to my other counties, uh, implemented PSAP, but instead of taking away their credits, again, they increased their income tax. And that's the last thing that, right now, public wants to hear is you increasing income taxes. Uh, what you need to do is cash management. Just rearrange what you got and start utilizing it better, uh, because all you're doing is giving enough ammunition, uh, for the state, they've been working on it for over a decade to show how you are doing a terrible job, not you as Wel, Wells County, but county government. They've been trying to do everything they can to make you look stupid.
And blame everything on you.
And that's where I try to come in and just do some common sense and learn from other counties of how they do it, and say, oh, don't do it that way, because that county already did, and they, they, they messed up. So, pretty much in a nutshell, I'm just saying, you'd do a lot better if you just took away the credits and, you know, yes, you're going to take a hit from the homeowners and be upset about it, but, you know, you got to pay your bills. And instead of increasing your income tax, which you're right now two point one, uh, I mean, literally, you could knock away the point two-three and be way down on the list, but, uh, that's pie mouskau, you, you've got bills to pay, you just need to rearrange what you're doing on it.
So, am I hearing you right? You're talking about the, the elimination of property tax relief, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, credits to bills.
The credits, just that alone, just that?
Yeah, and it's not lowering, you're keeping your income tax the same.
Yeah, which is what we did for the.
Yeah, and we've been, we've been.
That's what we did last year.
Chicken, yeah, yeah, no. We did.
Going back and forth, battering back.
There's a little more to the agreement than that, there's a board being set up, we, we got some other things going on, but.
Red tape, red tape, paperwork.
Yeah.
So, PSAP, boom, it's gone.
I'll probably get ahold of you more about this, the PSAP side, because we're looking to then start to wean wages out of PSAP, because there's not enough for capital expenditures within if you're including wages. But you're saying, hey, you may not have to do that, maybe over here, we could bump more into PSAP.
Yeah, you make a PSAP, because you don't have one, and that money right off the top, it's part of public safety.
It's the statewide, that's what they are, the statewide nine-one-one.
You get, yeah, nine-one-one, you get that money, but that's not enough, therefore, if you made a PSAP that's part of public safety.
We're working out.
Yeah, the state calls it.
I won't waste anybody's time here on that, because that's a separate project I'm working on, so, okay.
Yeah, bottom line is you eliminate all that red tape with the city and just make the fun, and, and it comes in, and whoever's in charge, boom, it drops. the fun and, and it comes in and whoever's in charge, boom, it drops in their lap and then they start paying the bills and they just say, well, hey, we're not gonna ask you, because you, the council, are saying, look, we, we made a dedicated fund for that.
Okay.
Don't talk to us about more and more money. And now you eliminate roughly a hundred thousand dollars every quarter, or four hundred thousand dollars a year, if I understood everything right, throughout the year, out of your general fund that you don't have to pay now.
Well, it comes out of statewide nine-one-one money. It doesn't come out of the general fund.
Oh, okay, I misunderstood that.
Yes, in state nine-one-one.
So you're, you get a portion of that or something? You said you, you paid.
Yes, we get all of it. We, we get all of it in the county.
And then we reimburse the city of Bluffton.
And then we reimburse the city.
Okay. This is the way it works.
Yeah.
Bottom line is you know the numbers and what you get from the state. Bottom line, again, it's just cash management, look at where you can, uh, you know, that, uh, again, EMS for, uh, uh, again, you look at the other buckets of what can pay directly to those things, cause every year they keep coming up with another bucket to be able to pay for certain things. And the taxpayers do not have a problem with EMS and nine-one-one and public safety. You know, we're not Chicago and Detroit and New York, we want public safety here, we're not trying to defund things here. And, uh, they have no problem, uh, say, yeah, yeah, well, uh, but, you know, doing other stuff, you know, a lot, I've been helping counties with jail money, you know, I, I don't know if we need all that, but, you know, again, public safety, they, I've never had a problem. Just like referendums for schools, when they're doing it, to fix the building, the air conditioning, they have no problem, or getting more for teachers. But they wanna beautify and make where I went to school, Oak Hill, uh, they wanted millions of dollars because they wanted a new football field and put, uh, new sidewalks in. Boy, that thing got a ninety percent against no and ten percent wanted it, so it didn't go through. Common sense, that's, I just keep telling counties, common sense, you know, meat and potatoes. Do the same, simple things and, you know, everything else takes care of itself. Questions? Okay.
So our current, on the second page, our current, uh, property tax credit allocation categories is fifty percent, one percent allocation type and fifty percent qualified res, which we cannot pick. So, if we are gonna keep credits.
What do you mean you can't pick?
You can no longer do qualifying res, they eliminate that, so now.
That's why it's blacked out.
Yeah.
Can't pick the second.
You have to take to zero or nothing. Is that what you're saying?
You have to redistribute it.
Or none of the other ones.
The qualified residential.
It doesn't exist.
If you wanted to try to do what you were doing before, you'd have to do eighty-five percent of your point-two-three, eighty-five percent of that money to homeowners.
Okay.
And fifteen percent to cap two, to get you where you were three years ago of what you're, you had attempted to do. Or you just put it to zero, don't have it, and figure out where other buckets you wanted to apply it to, which is on one of the other pages.
The first page.
Okay.
Our current allocations are on the front page as far as where, you know, money is going in our buckets, the certified shares, public safety, economic development, um, there's our property tax relief and then correctional. So if you still wanna keep the property tax relief at point-two-three, we have to just decide what buckets you want it in.
And that's back to page two.
One up here is, is that eighty-five fifteen that you wrote there then? And that would be for the point-two-three that we're keeping?
Yes.
That's how it would be distributed?
Yes, and he said it would keep it most generally going to where we have it.
Bottom line is you wouldn't have any, literally you would not have any cap losses in any of the caps, other than you're over sixty-five, just like you have been for, you know, since two thousand and eight, when it started.
That would fix our issue from?
But it will fix the issue of what the state says you can't do anymore.
And we'll still have to have a public hearing and, and then adopt an ordinance, which is this.
Are you kind of recommending, Darren, though, that we maybe think about doing away with the point-two-three and then putting more of that into the homeowners?
You can, uh, uh, again, Walbeach has one percent, they cut it in half, they, they just tore the band-aid off and did it.
That's the ones who get in the real trouble.
Their guns are gonna get, have to pay it.
They're getting point-two-three right now.
Okay, when that goes away, theirs are gonna.
Yeah, they'll be paying, they'll be going up.
Well, that's what I mean, is when I said that they're gonna get hit with it, they're gonna have to, theirs will go up.
Yeah, yeah, definitely, definitely.
That's what I mean, if we deal with point-two-three of property taxes, they're gonna go up.
Yeah.
Right, for the residential.
Yes.
And the easy way, uh, again, Walbeach.
Their taxes will go up, their, their credit will go down, which is in essence the same thing.
Same thing.
So they'll pay more.
That's what I'm saying, okay, so we'll call taxes going up, they're gonna be paying more.
Yes.
If it is, they're gonna pay more. Right, that's what I'm saying is.
Just rip the band-aid off and cut their credits in half in one year.
Rip the band-aid off, is what you're saying.
Huntington and Washington County both had a quarter percent and they phased it out, uh, half in one year and then the next year, in two years, they just, uh, and they both wish they just, I mean, a quarter percent. They just wish they just done away with it, by the way, uh, and, and got the hurt over with. Now, what are people, what are people gonna have to pay more on, real simple, on the website, uh, all they do is look at their credits. And, cause every bill's different, every, you know, do they have veterans, you know, blind, you know, mortgages, you know, how's it assessed, is assessment go up? Uh, the bottom line is, the website has what the credits were. So if you ripped off the bandings, did away with it, you can say, okay, hey, here's what you were getting. And now you're gonna have to come up with, out of your pocket. So there's no real math needed, they can look at their bills on the website and see it.
Yes, I may have said it inappropriately, their bills is not, taxes aren't going up, but their bill's gonna go up.
Probably.
Cause you're gonna take that credit away that they've been getting, which is still a big increase.
Given time, uh, we've seen it over the ten years and, and things are escalating faster as more people at the state level are, are rotating out. Uh, bottom line is they're gonna just eliminate the, uh, property tax relief eventually. We're seeing it, it's been happening. Uh, the first thing they wanna do is eliminate all the stupid little buckets around the one, two, and three. And now they've, uh, the last one will be going away, they said, uh, in twenty-twenty-four. Then, I, being, I've been working with them for so many years, I bet you probably know three years after that, they're, he's gonna say, hey, you know, we're done with credits. You know, people need to pay their bills, they have the one, two, and three in the state constitution, it's, it's over.
So if we're weighted, the onus is gonna fall on legislators and not us.
Yeah.
Exactly.
I know we've had a lot of increases in, we've had a lot of property increases in bills lately, I mean, with everything we're doing, I just hate to rip this off now.
Because you weren't managing, don't just make it look like you weren't managing the money in the first place, right. And that's where I keep trying to educate the counties, be proactive, try to do it before they make you do it.
And three thousand on mortgage.
Every time your back is against the wall, they find ways of blaming you, that you weren't doing the cash management right in the first place. Uh, Huntington told me when I started with them eleven years ago, they were in the red and, uh, now they're in the black because they just, you know, squirreled away money at different places to, and they renovated their, uh, courthouse two or three years ago, but they, it took them six years to build that fund up. It can be done, it just, you.
We've done it a couple times.
Yeah.
So we've, it's been little clicks.
Florida gradually.
As we've gone.
Yeah.
And now you're, you're basically saying.
Goodbye.
Goodbye to what.
And that's the way I look at it, you did chop it away and.
I mean, we have twice, if I, since I've been in councils, yeah.
I remember when we first started, I, I was thinking you had a one percent rate.
Okay, so we took seven last year for the jail.
For the jail.
Yeah.
And the other one's a big one, we created the acute bridge fund.
Bridge, yeah. Well, I'm in seventy-two of the ninety-two counties trying to help out where I can. And, uh, my fee is not going up. Uh, we look at it as, uh, we'd rather be in, we're averaging six thousand per county, uh, cause some of the down seller is four thousand, but you're, like, you're, you're ten thousand, cause we have drains and so many things, but we average six thousand per county and, uh, we're happy with that. So, uh, most of my invoices, I even think I said I, they, I froze until the year twenty-twenty-eight. So, I'd rather be in eighty counties at six thousand than most of the other softer vendors rather be in six counties at eighty thousand.
Do we do this each year, right?
We don't do it each year.
How can we do that?
You're required to review it every two years.
So, we, we could do this down the road, not now.
We have to do it this year.
No, 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 I get this, this one here, but as far as doing away with it.
Right, right.
Cause that, there's everything going on right now and we're looking at the highway garage bonding and, yeah, we have a lot of stuff.
Yeah, but we have to make a decision before the end of the year.
Uh, only on.
Only on the eighty-five fifteen, not, not the point-two-three.
You can do the eighty-five fifteen right now if you want it.
We need the point-two-three alone for now.
All we need is, we allocate it at this.
The eighty-five fifteen.
Then we're good, we don't have to make a decision on the.
Correct.
Correct. Correct.
Yeah, but we probably won't.
And we still need to have a public hearing and everything on this, just like we were making a change, I mean, cause we are making a change back here.
To go to the point-fifteen.
Okay. Got you.
Yes, thanks, Darren.
Thank you, Darren.
Appreciate it.
Do we want a motion on that part tonight?
On the eighty-five?
Lisa knows how to go with me, so if you ever wanted to talk to me, I'm always available.
I will, thanks.
All right, thank you, Darren.
To approve the notice of taxpayers.
So in essence, that doesn't change.
Thinking of motion to have a hearing, is that what we're doing?
Yes, to advertise the notice. Probably on September sixth.
Okay, I entertain a motion for that, needing an upcoming public meeting.
So moved.
What was that again, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the notice of taxpayers' hearing on proposed local income tax ordinance number two thousand twenty-two dash sixteen, which that meeting is scheduled for September second.
Sixth.
Sixth, sorry, sixth.
To have the hearing.
Just to have the hearing.
Public hearing. And then.
Let's not.
Then at that, at the public hearing, if no one, then you can pass the ordinance at that meeting.
So just to have a hearing.
And what's our window of latitude to change then? Anything we would wanna do with that tax relief? Do we have that latitude?
Yeah, you have a little time. I'm on.
This year?
Yes.
I'm not saying we're going to, but.
I'm just back.
I want an unshamed latitude there.
Back to the eighty-five fifteen, where's that, where, where are we at in here? I'm trying to find the eighty-five fifteen, I'm a little confused.
Second page, right here.
It's not there, you gotta write it in there.
Yes, you have to write it in.
Oh, I was gonna say, I'm sitting here looking at fifty percent and I'm sitting here looking at, where's this eighty-five fifteen now? Okay, that's in the proposed percent of revenue.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So I'm sitting here, I keep.
Credit is where they're going now, essentially is what that's saying. Okay. Okay.
We have a motion.
Yeah, we have a motion.
Is that okay, Scott? I didn't wanna, I know I jumped the gun when you were asking, did that make sense?
And the motion is to have a hearing next.
Just to have a hearing.
Correct, at our next.
Okay.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Post? Okay. We will have a hearing. Okay, so now we have the review of the estimated property tax levy limits and circuit breakers for each taxing unit, which you guys should have in front of you.
And by statute, in your first meeting in August, you need to review these levies and circuit breakers for each taxing unit and, um, you can offer, um, recommendations. Um, all of the levies grew by, by percent, so, um, you can make any recommendations if you would like.
What is typically done is, um, we guess go up with the, the max levy and the, I don't think we have anybody from any other taxing units here. Motion last year read that we notify all taxing units within the county that no recommendation is being made on the estimated, last year was two thousand twenty-two, this year would be two thousand twenty-three, property, property tax levy limits or the two thousand twenty-three estimated reductions due to circuit breakers. So we do this every year. A motion to that effect. At the, at the number stated now, at the max levy of five percent. Is that your motion?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion, we have a motion in a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Is that all for official business? Okay, I think, um, we'll open it up, any new business from council? I know Leon wants to speak, so.
You ready?
Yep, we're ready for you.
I will make it brief. A month ago, I told you that we nailed out three hundred and sixty-four letters to members of the Chamber of Commerce and as of this evening, seven members have contributed to the, uh, fund to help the low-income folk for the RSD projects. Uh, those seven donations total three thousand five hundred dollars and they range from an individual donation of one hundred to a maximum of two thousand. And of course, with, uh, the seven donations, that averages out to five hundred per donation. Probably a little bit less than what I had hoped for, but I have been verbally assured that there's more money still coming in, so how it'll end up, no one knows, but, uh, we're off to a pretty good start. The good news is, we've had only one application filed for, for help, only one. That was, it's an elderly woman, I don't even know her name, she's an elderly widow, uh, obviously on a fixed income. She qualified per the trustee's guideline and, uh, haven't even received the bill yet. I, I told the contractor to mail the bill to me, I haven't received it yet. I'm anticipating that it'll be less than half of this thirty-five hundred that we've got, so there's still a cushion there, but.
This is only for the connection and the destruction of their current tank.
This is for the, uh, decommissioning their old system and hooking up to the new.
Okay, not on an ongoing bill basis?
No, 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 no. Ongoing bills, they can contact the Salvation Army or, or the trustee again for that and, uh, but this is just for the decommissioning, but I am amazed that out of a hundred and eighty homeowners in Liberty Center and Uniondale, that only one person has applied. You know, I was told.
Aware of that, that, that potential to apply.
It could, because not everybody has had the work done yet.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, it, it's, it's not over.
Sure.
It's not over, but, uh.
Are you thinking of trying to broaden the, the ask out to more county residents or has it been in the paper, I don't really recall?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. I thought there was a list of some other.
I've got a lot of reporting when I made my report a month ago.
So I was thinking.
And, and one of our RSD board members asked me, how am I advertising this? Well, I said, well, I'm relying on the news banner and word of mouth.
Okay.
Normally, when there's free money available, word gets around, you know, but, you know, to the trustee's credit, they're not just giving this away like candy, there is a, you have to have a low income and, but this lady, uh, this widow did qualify and, um, and I'm tickled to death for her that her bills will be paid.
Leon, is there an average cost of decommission? I know it's different, but.
Yeah, it could range from fifteen hundred, maybe two thousand max, but in my gut feeling, Yeah, it could range from 1,500, maybe 2,000 max, but in my gut feeling, I believe the contractors that are being asked to do this job are keeping their costs down. I really think they're doing a community service, that's my gut feeling. I can't prove that, but I think, I think there's a community effort, even on the part of the contractors, to keep the costs down.
But technically, they're just laying the four sides in and then dumping dirt on top, I mean, that's basically what they're doing.
Could be electrical hookup and pumping out, you got to pump, pump the, you got to pump it out and then fill it in, and if there's an electric hookup, that's required to, so hopefully, it's no more than 1,500. That's why this 3,500 could potentially take care of three homeowners, so, that's where we're at right now.
I've had a couple people ask me, you guys must have wrote them sometime or something about $2,000 penalty or something. They called, if they don't get it done by a certain.
Oh.
And, and what's happening is, I know that these two people said they've called their contractor, he just hasn't got out there yet. Are you guys?
Well, from May the 10th, I believe, is when the clock started running for 90 days, they had to.
Yeah, that was, they quoted 90 days.
So we're fast approaching that date, August the 10th, but I think I can speak for the rest of the RSD members that were lenient to.
Leading.
Were, you know, there'll be, there'll be some exceptions, yeah. I don't.
You know, they, I guess, what they said, they talked to the contractor, and, you know, he's, don't want to get out there, but he just hasn't made it yet, so.
There's going to be circumstances like that, that are beyond the homeowner's control, and we'll take that into consideration, there's no doubt in my mind.
Well, I'll call back.
Yeah, yeah. Now, if someone's purposely just dragging their feet, that's a different story.
Yeah.
But if it's beyond their control, we'll be lenient.
Why ask who the contractor was?
They're already paying the $95 a month, whether they're getting the service or not. They're paying that, so, they're, they may as well get hooked up as soon as possible, because they're paying for it.
Yeah. Hey, appreciate the update, Leon.
Yeah, thanks, Leon.
Thanks for what you're doing with that. With that, we are adjourned. Unless you guys have anything else?
Okay.
Okay, we're adjourned.